Good afternoon. The February 12th, 2024 meeting of, no, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong date. April 15th, I'm going back too much, y'all. The April 15th meeting of the Greensville County School Board is now in session. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Madam Chair Janet Roberts.
Here.
Vice Chairman Ruston Jesse.
Here.
Mr. Ronald Pearson.
Here.
Ms. Bessie Reed Moore.
Here.
A quorum is established.
May we bow our heads for our invocation. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this another day. We thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us and our school division. We ask that you would lead and guide us as we try to do what is best for the students of Greensville County and Emporia. We ask you to give us good discernment that we may do what will promote them to be self-sufficient as they progress in life. These blessings and all others, we ask in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Now I'm seeking a motion for the approval of the minutes.
So move on.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second, that the motion would be accepted. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried. Now we're seeking a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So move.
Second.
A motion has been made and properly second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried. Seeking a motion for the approval of the warrants and financial information.
So move. Second.
A motion has been moved and properly second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those who oppose, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried. At this time, we will have public comments. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? If so, we ask that you would come forward, identify yourself or the group you represent. If that be the case, and keep your comments to a minimum of two to three minutes. Ms. Reddick, do you have any persons who would like to have?
No.
Okay. All right, all right. Well then, since we have no comments, we will move forward. Dr. Edwards, now will you cover the action items?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Glad to say good afternoon to everyone. And at this particular time, I will start review of the corrective action plan update that we are to do monthly in our monthly meetings. As you know, Greensville County Public Schools is under memorandum of understanding with the Virginia Department of Education. And each month, we go over our successes toward meeting the goals of having meet the criteria under the corrective action plan. And I will go over those categories as accordingly. Our first category is academics and student success. And in this category, what we do is we talk about the things that we have done, that I have done, and the team has done monthly that satisfy meets requirements is us making progress towards meeting and fulfilling the goals of the MOU. So under academic and student success, we attended the Region Eight Superintendent's Meeting that was held on March the 20th. The Virginia Transformation Leadership Academy on March the 27th. We have had our Executive Principals Roundtable on the 28th. A conference call with Catapult. We met with Co-Centric as we tried to address chronic absenteeism within Greensville County Public Schools. We met concerning the component of meeting with educational epiphany, working on it and talking about the use of Fry words and the possibility of indoctrinating that in Greensville County Public Schools. Also did more conversation about our Independent Day Schools that we have on the campus of Wyatt and here at Greensville County High School. Met with SVCC on implementing an early college. And last month, Mrs. Harrison made a thorough presentation as it relates to the early college that we plan to implement in the fall 2024. Continuous discussion on the Greensville County High School master schedule. We participated in Cook Center Mental Health Wellness Meeting. And that is the components where we have monthly meetings, or every other month meetings, as we look at closing the gap on mental health here in Greensville County and Emporia. Participated in VDOE Region Eight Literacy Training. And you'll hear more about our process toward doing our literacy plan in our instructional update that will be presented by Dr. Ferguson. We're continuing building our strategic plan. We're working with the Berkeley Group. Also, we participated in the Real Men Read back in February 14th, February 15th. Had the VIVAS Growth Discussion Webinar. And we have a discussion ongoing about Freshman Academy that we plan to implement in the fall. My weekly consultant video conferences with Dr. Johnson on March the 13th, the 20th, the 27th, and the April the 10th. Our senior executive leadership meetings were held on March 11th, the 18th, 25th, and the 11th of April. Also, an executive principal meeting on the 26th. And our directors meeting was held, and our working on the work session was held on April the 11th. Under leadership and governance, this is where the board and I go to our meetings that we must attend. Myself and the board participated in the vast VTLA School Division Financial Cohort on March the 12th and April the 9th. We have two more sessions to attend as we participate in this statewide category of the financial cohort. On the superintendent, the superintendent and board members attended the National School Board Association Professional Development held April the 6th through the 8th. We also did a budget committee meeting on March the 19th. The Chief Human Resource Officer and the board members and I met for policy updates on April the 11th. Also participated in a work session on the strategic planning with the Berkeley Group on March the 3rd. And we have another session that we will attend tomorrow on April the 16th. Also had executive coaching sessions with Dr. John Gordon, the Superintendent of Suffolk City Public Schools, along with Virginia Association of School Superintendents. And also participated in those monthly meetings. Also participated in discussions again with Dr. Johnson on the 13th, the 20th, the 27th, and the 10th. And participated in the Literacy Act Symposium that was held on March the 9th, along with members from the elementary school, the chief academic officer. And those meetings are held at the ESTI Center, and we still have two more of those meetings that we must attend. Also attended the Region Eight Superintendent's Meeting on March the 20th, and a conference call with the state superintendent on April the 12th. Under Operations and Support Services, headed up by Dr. Scott. We are working on the completion of the playground at GES, which the cement was laid. And I believe we're just about there for that total completion, that we can have all components in place. The media center renovation, we're looking forward to beginning that here at Greensville County High School. And if you have not had a chance, please look at the updates that are at Greensville Elementary School. We'll continue in our conversation about having a covered walkway at Greensville Elementary School. The plans have been submitted, and Mr. Winningham and team are working on that. And that work is scheduled to begin this summer. We've fully installed the pre-K modular units at GES. Our SRO, School Resource Officers and School Safety Officers participate in monthly trainings held on March 16th. That is headed up by Dr. Carey. And we are geofencing all of our campuses to continue to meet our safety needs as safety is a priority here in Greensville County Public Schools. Under Human Resource Leadership, on tomorrow, there's a Greensville County Job Fair that will be held at the Golden Leaf Commons, and that begins tomorrow morning. We have also, we've been reviewing our HR systems. We're looking and continuously holding at licensure meetings with teachers to make sure that our teachers get full certification. Continuously working on our staffing plans. And we're continues to update our policies as the board members and the policy team has met, and we are meeting monthly to update our policies. Under Community Relations and Communication, this is a new section that I have not been updating on, but we'll continuously update from this day forward. We attended the Rotary Club Meeting held on March the 26th. And we talked at the Rotary Clubs about, at the club meetings about what we're doing in Greensville County Public Schools when we given the opportunity. We met with the officials from Boars Head, and they are continues to partner with us on tutor funding here specifically at the high school. Earlier this year, Boars Head gave us $10,000 for the purpose of tutoring. And they're giving us $3,700 more dollars to work toward tutoring here to end the school year. Had a joint board meeting with the school board, the Board of Supervisors, and City Council. We also had meetings with Southside Virginia Community College. Met with Dr. Johnson, the president of the Southside Virginia Community College. Continuously working to update our website, Mr. German spearheads that in Communications along with Ms. Carey. And we're also working to continuously look at our school events and postings on social media to have that one-way and two-way communication improve here in Greensville County Public Schools. And Madam Chair and to the board, that is my update for the month of April on our corrective action plan.
Now we will move to the Virginia Literacy Act update.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. This time I'd like to call Dr. Ferguson to the podium, and she will give us an update on our Virginia Literacy Act update as we work to progress here in Greensville County Public Schools to complete.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, board members, superintendent.
Good afternoon.
As we've previously shared, as we previously shared, the state of Virginia passed the Virginia Literacy Act in 2023. And the Virginia Literacy Act is intended to provide school divisions with tools, resources, and technical assistance, assistance, and funding to support literacy throughout the division. The Literacy Act has several components, many of which Greensville County Public Schools had already fulfilled prior to the Virginia Literacy Act being passed. So we are very pleased around that, and we've already shared that previously. So every student receiving instruction based on scientific-based research. We adopted our, our, our reading instructional programs prior to this act coming out. We are working right now on a system for reading plans for all students that will be ready in the fall of '24, for the '24-25 school year. Every teacher K-5 has participated in Letters Training Cohort One, and we are looking at the opportunity for teachers to also participate in Cohort Two. And our ELA teachers in grades six through eight, we are looking at training for them as well. In addition to that, we have reading specialists at the elementary and the secondary. And the division is working on the Virginia, on our literacy plan, which is the point of this sharing today. I do want to share with you that statewide literacy screeners will be required in grades K through five for the '24-25 school year. We typically use PALS, but the state is now moving to the VALS system for literacy screeners for the '24-25 school year. In '25-26, they are hoping, and we are hoping, that they will have screeners for grades six through eight as well. And we are guessing that it will be VALS, but we do not know that for sure. So the Division Literacy Plan, in January, VDOE released the first template with instructions for divisions to complete their Division Literacy Plan. In March, they then released version two after we had started working on version one, but that is okay. The focus of the plan was initially for grades K-8, but they have narrowed that to grades K-5 for the '24-25 school year. And we are hoping that they will, it says that in '25-26 in the biannual plan, that it will include grades six through eight as well. As already shared, GCPS did adopt instructional materials for K-8 students in the fall of 2022. And previously shared, those adopted resources were a part of the approved VDOE list. Some divisions had to go back and re-adopt because the resources that they had previously adopted were not on the approved Virginia Department of Education reading list. Like Dr. Edwards shared, GCPS, along with other divisions, we have the opportunity to participate in the Literacy Implementation Series, which is helping some divisions to actually adopt their literacy instructional program, their high-quality instructional materials. We have already done that. And also to build the vision for their literacy plan, which has already been done as well under the leadership of Dr. Rochelle and our reading coaches, Ms. Jay Jarrett, Ms. Ferguson, and our reading specialists, Ms. Kay Sue Harrison and Ms. Mosley. There are two more sessions left, session three, April 25th, and then session four is to be determined. Sorry. Session four to be determined. Session three will be establishing conditions for successful implementation of our high-quality instructional materials. But again, we are ahead of the curve, so we will be going into year four for our reading material. So we already have successful implementation, we are very proud of that. And then our last session is deepening support for teachers. So under Dr. Rochelle's leadership, along with her team, they came up with our division's literacy vision statement. And it says, GCPS, supported by parents and the community, are dedicated to creating a culturally sensitive and literacy-enhanced environment where every student excels in reading, writing, critical thinking, and communication skills through tailored, evidence-based teaching and interventions. GCPS will deliver a comprehensive, pre-K-12 literacy approach that fosters a love for reading and enriches our students' independent reading paths. So that is the, our goal for Greensville County Public Schools for our literacy plan. Again, to reiterate, we have adopted our HQMI Materials '21-22 school year. We adopted Benchmark Advance for K-5 and Horton-Mifflin for grades six through eight. Sorry. And then just a brief overview of, it's fine, you can just stay right there. So this is the template that was shared by the state, and this is the template that Dr. Rochelle and her team are working on. So it asks us to provide a timeline for when and what is going to happen. And you can see that they've already started populating those areas. It asks us to identify what we're using to provide training for teachers. So we are extremely pleased because a lot of the things that they are asking for in the plan are already being completed. There is a section for family and community involvement and engagement. That is the part that we are going to be working on. The monitoring of students are the plans that are being developed. Well, the template of the plan is being developed for the '24-25 school year. And then how we are reviewing the data is the last section. Section six is our engagement piece, and that is the section that they will be working on this week. They'll be working on that section this week. So that is a draft of, of the plan. You can go back to the other slide, to the main PowerPoint. That's the draft of the plan. The final version for the plan will be presented to the school board for review and approval at the June 2024 School Board Meeting. The plan is due to VDOE July 1, 2024. And VDOE will approve plans, I'm assuming, beginning August 1. I don't think they're going to be able to review them all at one time. So we will hear something back on or shortly after August 1. And that is our literacy plan for Greensville, for Greensville County Public Schools.
Thank you. And Dr. Ferguson, and you know, our teachers in action. And as always, we want to highlight the things that our students do and our wonderful faculty and staff here. So we want to pause and just look at the teachers in action, do their thing in front of the Virginia Department of Education. And so we thought it would be wonderful if Dr. Chapman and would lead the way as we look at this beautiful group of teachers and what they're doing. Dr. Chapman, take over, please.
So we are, we were using a book, Small Moves, Big Games, by Nancy Motley. It's a great book. But during lunch, we had a working lunch Saturday, and we had to create a summary of the book. You could do a skit, you could do a song, or you could create a poster. So we created a song. It's, it's a great song. It's a great video. But keep in mind, we had less than an hour to do this, but we did this thing.
Understood. There'll be some serious moves up there.
I was lip syncing. And you can tell, this is to the theme of, we are family, okay? And it says, Wyatt is a small move.
That's right. And Dr. Chapman, to the team, with those small moves and Miss Person on a Saturday. Look at that commitment. And I'm going to say to the high school, Wyatt is a small move. That's why I was at that particular moment. And we thank all our teachers from the high school and also from the elementary school. Because that's that 212 degrees of extra effort when you're giving up a Saturday to participate in professional development. So I applaud all of our teachers at all three locations as they may progress toward those small moves to help us get big gains. All right, thank you so much.
All right, now we'll hear from Dr. Edwards regarding the Perkins Grant.
Glad to call Mrs. Harrison to the podium as we look toward moving forward with getting our Perkins Grant submitted.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Edwards.
Good evening.
Just to talk to you a little bit about Perkins and ask for your continued support and approval of the Perkins Grant. Okay, the importance of Perkins, Perkins Five provides federal support for CTE programs and focuses on improving the academic and technical achievement of CTE students, strengthening the connections between secondary and post-secondary education, and improving accountability. It expands opportunities for every student to explore, choose, and follow career and technical education programs to study and career pathways to earn credentials of value. A part of the Perkins application includes our five-year program. So just want to tell you what our five-year plan is for the district. We implemented cosmetology this year, which we are super excited about and has been a huge success, as well as our fashion careers. Next year, we're looking to implement criminal justice and HVAC. '26 Teachers for Tomorrow, Early Childhood. '27 Programming and Computer Gaming and Cybersecurity. And '28, cybersecurity is mentioned with the goal of being able to offer it here in our district. We currently have students who participate in the South Heald Office. The Perkins funding, the estimated amount for this year is $68,000, which is $2,000 more than what was submitted for this current school year. For breakdown for our internal equipment, $30,000. Purchased services, approximately $25,000, which includes our trainings, our software programs that we currently use, and also the process for our completer surveys. And then the credentialing test for an approximately $13,000. Why approve our Perkins Five Plan for '24-25? To continue to provide opportunities for all of our student populations regardless of their diploma track. Increase opportunities for career, college, and military exploration with business information sessions, Working Wednesdays, which have been a huge success. A shout out to all of our partners who have participated in Working Wednesday so far. To increase our work-based learning opportunities, have career fairs as well as field trips. And equally important, to be able to build a pool of skilled workers to meet the local employment needs. And that is why we need our Perkins. And I would love to end with our why. So on April the 10th, which was last week Wednesday, in our partnership with the Employment Commission in Virginia Works, we had students attend the hiring event for the shipyard. On April the 12th, our teachers took students to the shipyard. Shout out to Ms. White and Mr. Brown. And on April the 15th, I met one of our students this morning, super excited because the student had received an offer to work for Newport News Shipbuilding. And that's our why.
directors and principals to develop a procedure for implementing this policy. What will we do if this happens to one of our students? So, that's what we have to do and bring back to you in May. The second policy is Policy G Personnel Paid Holiday. In the green highlights, you will see the holidays that were not there with us going back to school pre-Labor Day. We now have a pre-Labor Day holiday on that Friday and then Labor Day. So, we added the pre-Labor Day. We made changes to the Thanksgiving holiday wording to include fall break. You'll see the change in the number of Christmas vacation days for 12-month employees. We added Good Friday, Easter Monday. Memorial Day was not there, and we added Juneteenth. And we'll bring these back for approval next month. The last policy in this particular section is the treatment of transgender students. If you move to access to facilities, page four. All students are entitled to have access to restrooms, locker rooms, and the committee decided to say or, changing facilities, not and. On page five, if you would go to the third paragraph, last sentence, beginning with moreover, removing that from the policy. And then professional development training, making sure that we provide training to our staffs as it relates to the LGBTQ students, including safety and support measures. And that is all I have for these revisions.
Is anything the Policy Committee would like to add?
Yep, we can go right into it. So, we were able to meet two times since our previous board meeting, mainly going over VSBA policies. We sprinkled in a few of our division-wide policies that either have been outdated for so long or just needed to be reviewed. Myself and Ms. Reedmore began getting headaches at lunchtime, but we still pushed through it. But overall, nearly 50 policies that we went over in two meetings. So, tonight, we're hopefully going to vote on the action item for the VSBA part, but our goal is to kind of tackle these 15 to 25 policies at a time. We kind of joked with everybody the last few months, but some of these policies have not been updated since 1980s. So, it's nobody's fault. It's just time for, to move to the next degree. So, we'll continue to update everybody as we go, come across these, and that's all we have. Anything else?
Okay.
Thank you.
Are we ready to remove, to move to special recognition? Dr. Edwards?
Yes, Madam Chair. At this time, we'll have our special recognition section, and I call on Ms. Riddick to move forward. Thank you, Mrs. Riddick. And Dr. Scott.
Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Edwards, colleagues and guests, good evening. Greensville County Public Schools takes pride in recognizing and celebrating employees for the work that they do, and we're so excited to have a room full of people tonight. Before we get started, we're going to recognize Autism Awareness Month. April is Autism Awareness Month. The recognition raises awareness about autism acceptance and promotes inclusion and connectedness for people with autism. The color blue, associated with calmness and acceptance, is a primary color designated for autism. April is also National Child Abuse Prevention Month. National Child Abuse Prevention Month recognizes the importance of families and communities working together to prevent child abuse and neglect. Prevention services and supports developed by collaboration can help parents, other caregivers, and communities protect children and strengthen families. The first group of employees up for recognition will be our Assistant Principals as April is National Assistant Principals Week, which was celebrated April 1st through 5th while we were on spring break. National Assistant Principals is a celebration of unsung heroes in our education system. These dedicated administrators work tirelessly to bolster teachers, motivate students, support their principal, create positive learning community, and face the unpredictable challenges that land on their desks each and every day. Assistant Principals play a crucial role, and tonight, because we missed them over spring break, we want to recognize them for their hard work and commitment to our schools, to students, and to the profession. When I call your name, please come up. From GES, we have Tanisha Deloche. Joanna Glenn Barry. And Medica's Riddick. Oh, and Tammy Hand. Did I say her? Okay, thank you. And if you all could stand up front so Mr. German can get your pictures quickly. I think that Scott got it now. For Wyatt Middle School, Dr. Adrian Chapman, Mr. Victor Fenner, Ms. Tekeisha Hot Jones. Greensville County High School, Dr. Fabiaro, Dr. Shontay Posey-James. April is also National Library Month. School Library Month is American Association of School Librarians' celebration of school librarians and school libraries every April. School librarians are encouraged to host activities to help school and local community celebrate the essential role that strong libraries play in transforming learning. On April 4th each year, National School Librarian Day recognizes the professionals who keep the school librarian work in order. School librarians spend long hours keeping the library organized. They are dedicated to helping our children find resources they need to keep learning. Join me in thanking and celebrating our school librarians. Ms. Pamela Jones at Greensville Elementary. Mr. Z Wyatt Middle School. And Brenda Stevenson, Greensville County High School. So, now we have another group of unsung heroes. Paraprofessional Appreciation Day always takes place on the first Wednesday of April each year. These fantastic people deliver targeted support to students who may need extra help and work to maintain the classroom, keeping it running smoothly, helping the teachers. Paraprofessionals are the unsung heroes of the education system. Without their strong foundations, teachers frequently report feeling overwhelmed and overworked. Paraprofessionals should shoulder the workload and allow teachers to focus on what they do best, and that is to teach. Paraprofessional Appreciation Day seeks to bring these paraprofessionals to the forefront to show them a little extra love for all the incredible work that they do day in and day out. To all of our paraprofessionals, thank you for the work you do. I'm excited because we do have a few in the building tonight. Darla Wilson Hall. Montavious Robinson. Taylor Moore. Connie Holloman. Jessica Smith Malone. Clarice Connor is not here. Alkeisha Adams and Ellen Bryant. Thank you all so much for being here tonight. And last but certainly not least, National Administrative Professionals Day. National Administrative Professionals Day, also known as Secretaries' Day or Admin Day, recognizes professionals who keep the offices running smoothly every day. The day recognizes the work of secretaries, administrative assistants, receptionists, and other administrative support and professionals. Central to any school division, these professionals keep an office organized and efficient. The day and the life of an administrative professional is varied from moment to moment. While organization is key to their success, their flexibility and ability to handle the unexpected makes them valuable. Tonight, we have Brittany Brown, Krista Gattuso, Connie Pouncy for Greensville Elementary. Sheena Edwards, Latisha Layton, Ava Young, Wyatt Middle School. Judith Epps, Michaela Coggsdale, Maria Webb, Natasha Wright, Greensville County High School. Jennifer Burgess, Haley Carey, Quatia Deschay, Devon Finch, Shirley Gill, Latina Givens, Leah Hardy, Diana Polinkas, and Sheila Squire, Central Office. Thank you all so much for the work you do. All right, now, for our division competition. For best staff attendance, 92.2% Greensville County High School. She can't even get the trophy. It is a battle between the middle school and the high school every month. All right, Clean School Award goes to Wyatt Middle School.
We'd like to celebrate all of our faculty and staff, and I certainly appreciate all the work that you do and looking and moving forward to this each time, always looking forward to this month, and not only to this month, but every day because the school year starts, has been starting in September, and for 10 months, it is a onward, upward mobility toward having student success, and each one of you play an integral role in that as we move forward here in GCPS. So, I salute you and I thank you wholeheartedly for the work that you do. Let's give them another round of applause, please.
Now, we will move to our action items. Dr. Edwards?
Yes, ma'am. And so, as you look under our action items, again, we thank the hard work of the Policy Committee for going through the policies as we move forward and updating all of our policies here in Greensville County Public Schools. And so, Madam Chair, we bring to the board this slate of policies that we want to move forward with as the Policy Committee has reviewed them, vetted them, and it is the recommendation from administration that these policies be approved for submission for Greensville County Public Schools.
I'd like to seek a motion at this time for approval.
So, move.
It's been moved and properly seconded. We accept the provisions to the policy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those that oppose, nay. The ayes have it, the motion can. All right. And our next topic of discussion is the four-day work week. Dr. Edwards?
Yes, Madam Chair. As we know, we're moving forward with summer. As we enter to this last nine weeks, we would like to go ahead and seek approval for the four-day work week where we will be working, the 12-month employees will be working on a 10-hour workday this summer, as you know, as we move forward to moving toward our first pre-Labor Day opening in the fall. And those hours of operation will be from 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., and we want to begin that the last week of school when the students leave for the summer break. A four-day work week consisting of 10 hours a day from 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., and I am recommending approval.
I'm seeking a motion for.
So, move.
Second. It's been moved and properly seconded that we will implement the four-day work week beginning this summer. And so, Madam Chair, we bring to the board this slate of policies that we want to move forward with as the Policy Committee has reviewed them, vetted them, and it is the recommendation from administration that these policies be approved for submission for Greensville County Public Schools.
I'd like to seek a motion at this time for approval.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second that we accept the provisions to the policy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, nay. The ayes have it, the motion carried. All right. We're now, yes. Our next topic of discussion is the four-day work week. Dr. Edwards?
Yes, Madam Chair. As we know, we're moving forward with summer. As we enter to this last nine weeks, we would like to go ahead and seek approval for the four-day work week where we will be working, the 12-month employees will be working on a 10-hour workday this summer, as you know, as we move forward to moving toward our first pre-Labor Day opening in the fall. And those hours of operation will be from 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., and we want to begin that the last week of school when the students leave for the summer break. A four-day work week consisting of 10 hours a day from 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., and I am recommending approval.
I'm seeking a motion for...
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second that we will implement the four-day work week beginning this summer, and that gives everybody a pre-fight. A long weekend.
Let me stand corrected, Madam Chair, and to the board. I was just given the signal five, so it is 7:30 to 5:00. I think I want to get 30 more minutes in there. So it's 7:30 to 5:00 p.m.
Y'all gonna treat him real nice because he took out for 30 minutes. Y'all get him a little bit early, so we can work hard this summer. Do we need to seek a motion? Okay, we're going to rescind the last motion, and we're seeking a motion with the change of the time.
Yes, ma'am. This is the time, it's 7:30 to 5:00.
Okay.
Yes.
It's been moved and properly second that we revise the time for the four-day work week. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried.
Thank you.
Mr. Pearson has a question.
Okay, all right.
Can we add that up again, please?
Dr. Edwards?
Yes, Ms. Pearson, he said, can we add that up again? And so... So generally speaking, there is a, you either have a 45-minute lunch. Right.
There is a 10-hour.
It's not, it's not a 10-hour workday. That's what... So, so we're good on the approval part. He just understand that it's not a 10-hour workday. That was after.
Inclusive of lunch. That's what it's...
So it would be a...
Inclusive of lunch. A 10-hour workday inclusive of lunch. Is the best way to frame it.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson.
We're all on the same page.
Keep us on our toes.
It's his fault?
Yes, ma'am.
We're ready to move forward. Okay, all right.
Everybody looking at me like, okay. You better be quiet.
Keep us on our toes, Mr. Pearson.
No, we're good.
Now, if you have any broken windows...
I don't want y'all to think I'm up here asleep.
Now, if you have any broken windows on your car, it's nobody in here. All right, we're ready to move. At this time, we will discuss the Boars Head donation. Dr. Edwards?
Yes, Madam Chair. Boars Head has been proven to be a stark supporter of Greensville County Public Schools, and we appreciate all their support. As I stated earlier, they gave us a $10,000 donation to support Edgenuity, which is our now called Imagine Learn Credit Recovery here at the high school, and is assisting Dr. Halls and the Greensville County High School team. And they, we approached them, and they were willing to give us an additional $3,700 as we move to support Imagine Learning as we round out this school year, and we recommend approval of the $3,700 donation from our partners, Boars Head, to continue effort to watch student success here at Greensville County High School.
Are there any questions? I'm seeking a motion for approval of the Boars Head donation.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second that we accept the donation from Boars Head. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, nay. The ayes have it, the motion carried.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm moving, looking at our next item. It is a, we're seeking approval to utilize the facility at the Hicksford, Old Hicksford Elementary School, and we would like to utilize this facility for the Southwest Elite Jaguars Youth Football Program. It's a program, a youth football program that is established so that students will have the joys of playing football, and we recommend approval so that the Southwest Elite Jaguars will have a facility to practice upon. We are looking forward to seeing the success of this South, 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 excuse me, I said Southwest. It's Showtime. Showtime Elite Jaguars for the use of the facility on the Hicksford campus.
I had a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we going to have enough update to the inside of the building for usage? Is it in good shape? It's been, had been used in a while.
Okay, yes, yes, Madam Chair. And so this is for the use of the outside grounds only. Yes, ma'am. Outside grounds only.
Would they be able to carry their own insurance?
Yes.
And we would just need to be added to their policy for that?
We have researched that and we should be covered. I look at it as equate to what I guess the community knows, our partnership with EGRA is to utilize the facilities here at Greensville County High School during football season. This gives us another edge for community-wide engagement.
Are there any other questions? If not, we'll seek a motion for approval.
So move.
It's been proved, moved and properly second to approve the usage of the Hicksford facility for the practice of the Showtime Elite Jaguar Football Program. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And along those same lines, we have invested in new field goal posts here at Greensville County High School. And as a partnership, looking at our partnership with Showtime, we would like to donate the old field goal post to be put up so that the, it gives all the resemblance of a true football field, because they are sitting in our warehouse, and we feel this is a great opportunity for those field goal posts to be utilized, as we have replaced the ones here at Greensville County High School. And we are seeking to make this donation to the Showtime Elite Jaguars Youth Football Program.
That's a great idea. We seek a motion.
Just the same question, just are we going to be held liable for the installation of it or anything of that nature?
We look at, we'll partner with, get with Southwest, excuse me, Showtime, so that we can see how the field goal posts will be installed, and we should be good to go, Mr. Jesse.
Any other questions? We're going to take a motion.
So move.
It's been moved and properly second that we allow the utilization of the Hicksford facility for the practice of Showtime Elite Jaguar Youth Football Program. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried.
We look forward to seeing great things from Showtime Elite.
We're ready to move?
Yes, ma'am.
Perkins. Perkins.
Yes, you heard Mrs. Harrison.
I'm sorry. Special Education Annual Plan.
Yes.
I'd like to call Mrs. Williams to the podium in case there are any questions. So we heard the Special Education Annual Plan at last month's meeting, and we are seeking the board's approval to move forward with our Special Education Annual Plan. And Ms. Williams, is there available if there are any questions?
Did you get some extra money? That's my question. Sometimes, you know, they will, state will come up with a little extra. I was crossing my fingers, you get a little extra money, but we're going to make it. Yeah.
We're going to seek a motion?
Yes.
To approve the Special Education Annual Plan?
So move.
It's been moved and properly second that we approve the Special Education Annual Plan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you.
Dr. Edwards, you going to talk to us about the Perkins grant?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, Madam Chair. I'd like to call Mrs. Harrison to the podium once again in case there are any questions that the board has thought of. Ms. Harrison gave us an overview once again of the Perkins Grant, and this is the grant that helps our career technical education students, and we really appreciate you putting our Y at the end and having that young man have the opportunity to get hired at the shipyard. And so at this time, administration is seeking approval for the 2425 Perkins Grant so we can continue our successes with our students.
We motion?
If there are any questions, Mrs. Harrison will be happy to answer.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second that we approve the Perkins Grant for the upcoming session. All those that are in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried.
Thank you.
We're ready to move into closing.
Yes, ma'am. We do announcements.
Okay, all right.
At this time, I'd like to do a couple of announcements. We have a lot of events coming up. Right here at the high school on April the 19th, which is this Friday, we're having a Fashion Careers, and it's entitled "Fruits of Our Labor." Mrs. Johnson is presenting the fashion show along with her students, and this event will take place this Friday at the Greensville County High School Gymnasium at 2:45 p.m. April the 19th, a Fashion Careers show presented entitled "The Fruits of Our Labor." Also, Wednesday, April the 24th, we will have at Greensville Elementary School, EL Parent Night. EL Parent Night, our multicultural night at Greensville Elementary School. That's going to be held at April the 24th from 5:30 to 6:45 p.m. Once again, we will have another session with, partnered with the Cook Center, and we thank Ms. Astrop as always for spearheading those events. It's going to be, this one's entitled "Grief: The Healing Process After Loss," and that next parent night will be May 2nd from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., and all of the mental health components are via Zoom, and you can always scan the QR code to participate in each one of those sessions. And the board will continue on April the 29th with the Finance Cohort that will be in conjunction, and those meetings will be held at the Virginia School Board Association, and the board is looking at dates to participate in master school board training. Also, we'll be participating in the Virginia Transformation Leadership Academy, which will take place, that superintendent, myself, on April the 21st. And Madam Chair and to the board, those are the announcements that I have for this meeting.
Are there any others? If not, we entertain a motion to move to closed session to discuss, consider, or interview prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the school board.
So move.
I'll second it.
All right. It's been moved and properly second that we move into closed session. Thank you all for coming.
Have a good evening.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Yes, Madam Chair. And please certify.
Madam Chair Janet Roberts. Vice Chairman Ruston Jesse.
Yes.
Mr. Ronell Pearson.
Yes.
And Ms. Betsy Reed Moore.
Yes.
Any recommendations from closed session?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair and to the board, administration is recommending approval of the agenda as presented in closed session.
We need a motion.
So moved.
Second. A motion has been made and properly seconded. All in favor say aye. Those who oppose nay. The motion and the ayes have it and it is carried. You have any announcements?
We've, no ma'am, no more announcements.
Okay, all right. Well then we're seeking the motion to a return. So moved.
Second.
It's removed and properly seconded that we adjourn the meeting at this time. All those who are in favor signify by saying aye. Those who oppose nay. The ayes have it. We are adjourned.
Thank you.